Let's be, um, let's begin then. And I, do we have this recording at this point? Are we gonna record this?
Yes, I have it recording.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so we're gonna begin with our, I'm gonna open up council time, sorry, for Wednesday, October twenty sixth, sixth, excuse me, 2021. And we will begin by discussing our 2022 legislative priorities with Joshua and Annika Vaughn. Good morning, Annika and Josh.
Good morning.
Thanks for joining us. Take it away. I, um, you just go ahead and, and start your presentation. And we'll.
And I don't know, Lindsay, do you want to set this up?
Sure. So, um, just over the last couple of months, I've talked to each of the counselors, but just for the public, um, as we get ready for the 2022 legislative session, um, and of course, we're coming into a short session. It's a non-biennial budget year. So, um, that's reflected in some of the priorities that we have as well. The first, um, priority that you can see here, we have on the left side, the Clark County specific priorities and Josh and Annika will go through those. And then on the right side, the statewide kind of county concerns. Um, and they'll talk about the process in terms of WAC and those priorities and the places where we may partner with other counties or the places where we may be, um, kind of helping and assisting WAC to the extent that it's on some of their priorities as they finalize later this year. So Josh and Annika, go for it.
Thanks, Lindsay. Um, and good morning, council. Nice to see everybody. Um, to put a little bit finer points, Lindsay was saying it very politely with this, with the 60-day session, um, which does look again like I think, like I guess is it's going to be virtual. So probably, probably no public or non-legislators, legislative staff on campus. We really want to keep our legislative agenda short. Um, the supplemental budget, you know, it's not a good year to be making big budget requests. Um, though state revenues are extremely healthy, they definitely have money to spend. Um, there's just not gonna be much time to really advocate for those for, for much of anything new. So, uh, that's really the, the overall picture for why you see a little bit slimmer, um, agenda than what we normally, I think, would go for with on the sales tax. So on the left-hand side.
Josh, you're breaking up.
Oh, weird. Sorry. Okay. Well, I'm just gonna have to plow forward. It looks like my connection is okay. So, uh, yeah, just, uh, let me know if you have questions. Um, on sales tax leakage, you know, we know this is a ongoing concern, um, of Clark County. Um, it's also something we hear from some of your cities and other border counties. It's not, I don't think necessarily a bad idea to keep it on their radar to let them know that there's an impact. I just want to make sure that your expectations are realistic about, you know, one, what might happen in the 60-day session and then two, just that, you know, I think you hear this from even your legislative delegation, but there's not a whole lot of sympathy sometimes around this issue. But I do, since it is such a big impact and, um, you know, has been a priority for a long time, it does make sense to keep it on the list. Um, somewhat similar on, uh, the 179th Street interchange, you know, we did get pushed back in last year's transportation budget a little bit. The reason we want to keep this on the radar is in the event that they do not, um, adopt a new transportation revenue package, there is still a budget problem in the state transportation budget because of the impacts of COVID. I think it's unlikely, but in the possibility, they start to look at projects that were previously funded and, and pull, decide to pull money out of those projects. Um, so I think we just want to keep it on the radar, particularly since this is, you know, two things, since it's really been a priority for us for a long time, but also to make sure that legislature doesn't, um, completely focus on the Columbia River Crossing as, you know, the only transportation priority in the region. Um, and just as a little bit of a side note, there are conversations going on still, um, amongst primarily House and Senate Democrats about a new transportation revenue package. Those conversations reportedly have been productive. They still have told their members to hold the second week in November for possible, possible special session, which is when they will have their committee assembly. But I think, you know, most of our peers, um, that have been doing this for a while and observing this, don't think it's very likely that they actually do pass a revenue package this session. They just don't, part of this, um, year. Um, similarly, I think 2022 is too short a session to get something like that done. I think we're all feeling somewhat skeptical at this point, though those conversations are continuing and we need to be prepared to jump through that window if it does open. The stranger things have happened with the legislature. Um, on Vancouver Lake and Kathleen Lindsay, you may want to chime in a little bit more on some of the details on this, but as you all know, this is a budget proviso, um, that Senator Cleveland and Representative Wiley in particular, I've heard express desire and interest to see this go forward about putting together a coordinated plan for the restoration of Vancouver Lake. You know, we've had several conversations with Senator Cleveland about how to set this process up and what the county's role should be. My sense is here that as a result of those conversations, online conversations at your level, but between you and the agency, there may be a desire to move that money over to someone else that can use it better. But, um, fill me in if that's the sort, sort of wrong, interpretation of the request. The point being, this is a priority for the delegation and for you, and we need to make sure that it's on their, their radar.
Yeah, I think that's fully accurate and we don't have a, a resolution yet, um, unless Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a resolution yet on the exact pathway forward on that. So this is more of a placeholder and hopefully we'll know more, but, um, since we know this is a priority for Senator Cleveland, I think this is one that we don't have to, we're not needing to educate the delegation on some complex issue. It's, it's an issue they're well aware of. So, um, it's, I think, okay to have it as a placeholder while these other conversations are pending.
Yeah, that is accurate. We are reaching out to the other state jurisdictions, um, mainly DNR right now, just to kind of talk about what that process could look like. So there's one of two options on how we move forward. One is that we keep the language the same and then have some sort of MOU where we pass through the funding to the jurisdiction that actually has the authority over the lake while we can still be a partner in that process. So I want to make that clear too. Um, or does it make more sense to actually have this money filtered directly to the agency who has the authority? Um, but either way, I, I have heard from the council, um, that there is, um, a desire to have a coordinated effort in which the county plays a role as long as we can do that within our existing resources, um, and support that process.
I think it is good too, since it is a priority. And, and I should have mentioned as well, I, Lindsay probably has briefed you on this, but Annika and I have met with pretty close to the whole delegation, um, over the summer and had been in touch with them about their priorities. Um, so we did get the opportunity here from some additional, like I mentioned, Representative Wiley in particular, saying that this was also her priority. Um, I think it is nice to have it on the agenda just to show the sort of, um, your recognition that this is a priority for them and it's issue you're paying attention to. Um, on the other side of the column, we know that there are other entities, particularly WAC, that will be working on some of these statewide issues. The body camera issue, um, gets a little bit tied up. It depends on how you describe it. In some of the conversation around it, the legislature continued on some of the law enforcement and public safety mandates that they passed last year. The, but, uh, one of the bills they passed does require that, um, any detention of a juvenile be recorded or any, um, any detention that leads to, or results in a felony charge, which, you know, it's very hard to distinguish at the outset of a detention, whether or not it's going to be a felony charge. So essentially the interpretation is that all law enforcement are gonna have to have body cameras. Um, there are other jurisdictions that are raising this issue, both just a single standalone body worn camera needs, but also in the, just you need to fund us with additional law enforcement justice money and, um, you know, however you want to phrase that, I think is fine. Um, it does make sense to be bringing it forward. Um, on the GMA, you know, there is a, they requisitions, uh, the Department of Commerce to do another two-year study on growth management act reforms. That process has kicked off. I think the possibility of major GMA reforms, this next session is probably unlikely. But, uh, 23, I think there will be a real significant conversation around that. And I do think in 22, we know that the bill that would add climate change to the growth management act is, is going to be considered again, is going to be pushed very hard. Um, I think it's also likely that the bill that had to do with salmon planning and intersection with the GMA as well as changing the standard to net ecological gain instead of just, um, sort of status quo mitigation. Um, so I, and, and then the other conversation that will have a GMA element that you may have heard about in the press and maybe doesn't impact counties as much as cities, but is a mandate from the state level about density and housing. And, um, there will be legislation, there was last year, there will be again this year legislation that simply says you can't have any zones in your jurisdiction that are zoned for single family only. You have to have some allowance for multifamily in essentially every zone in the jurisdiction. Now, I know that Clark County has such a large unincorporated population that that really could be perhaps for you, an issue that is even more impactful than other counties. Um, but knowing that that density zoning mandate is coming forward, we want to make sure and have it on our agenda as something that we're paying and then last, um, but not least, uh, and WAC has really been leading the charge, as you know, on continuing to ask for additional public defense resources as well as funding for the Lake decision. Um, I think it's, even though WAC will be leading the charge on this, it is such a big issue for counties across the state and for Clark County that I think it's worth putting on our agenda and highlighting that, you know, we're, we're with WAC on this and looking for opportunities that we can support them and come in as examples when it's appropriate. Um, oh, I did. I did skip over, I'm sorry, at the bottom of the list, the CPAC or fix. Uh, my understanding is that's been worked out locally and we can. So that's.
Yep, that's correct.
Sorry, Lindsay. So that's what we're proposing and putting forward. Um, you know, happy to answer questions and, and hear your discussion.
I'm, I'm just, uh, step in here one second. Uh, I got a question about the CPAC or. Uh, and I also want to comment. I, I did send an email to our sheriff to ask him if he had, uh, priorities with regard to the new legislation that passed and how our law enforcement's hands are completely tied in many ways. And I think it's very bad for the community. And therefore I asked if there were any legislative priorities that he had, and I, I believe, um, I did send that to Lindsay this morning. I'm going to send it to you, Gary, because you're on the LSC. Maybe something that WAC can entertain perhaps with the sheriff's, um, association throughout the state, but there are, there are things in our community that are just really not good because of the legislation that was passed. And so, and, and in fact, I can send this on to all of the counselors, what, what the sheriff has suggested. He said he could go on and on, but he suggested, uh, I think three, three things, three different bills that were really something that needs to be tweaked or, or changed somewhat. So, but, uh, that said, I want to go back to, and, and I understand it's a short session, and so that is going to be a more difficult thing to address as well. But I want to go back to CPAC or how have we fixed it, Lindsay?
So there was a, a question in terms of the language. Um, and there, um, was an agreement in terms of the language that was reached with other counties and our treasurer, Alicia Topper, indicated that she's, um, comfortable with the language that we're moving forward with for the hearing. And so we were able to reach language that both met the council's intent and, um, was agreeable for the PA's office and the treasurer as well. So we didn't need to, um, have a legislation fix to address that issue.
Okay, so, uh, my understanding is, is that what, which county was it? That the most recent amendment to their CPAC program happened in August? And are, so are we adopting the language that they amended their CPAC program? In other words, the county is, and, and the treasurer is not responsible at all for any default. So we're leaving that out, which will make the financiers say, we don't want to do this if you're not going to follow through on it. That would indicate to me, if we're doing that, which is what our treasurer has indicated she supports, if we're doing that, that means that the financiers will not finance because they don't have that, the county taking care of the foreclosure, the possible foreclosure. Now, wouldn't it need then a legislative change?
No. So the language that we have reached the agreement on is agreeable to the stakeholder community and to the treasurer, to both. So I vetted it through the stakeholder community and he indicated that they would have some 40 million that would be closing by the end of November. Um, and that there's another potential 40 million in the pipeline in the next six months. So they're comfortable with it. They're agreeable to it. They've looked through the entire draft. Um, and so everybody's on board at this point.
Okay. Other questions of the council or comments?
Madam Chair, I have some general comments and I'll just start with CPAC or, I mean, this kind of was thrust upon us as an easy thing by the legislature. I, I'd like to move forward and just see how it plays out. I don't know that we need to have it on our legislative priority, um, list. I don't want to expend a whole lot of uh, energy on it as a county, not knowing what, uh, potential impacts it, it may have for us. So I, I will just see how it plays out. Obviously, 179th is still a priority. Uh, here's my view on Vancouver Lake. I wish we could just spend that 150,000. Uh, it's not much money. You know, they have another, uh, weed infestation and that money would take care of it. Uh, but, but not much else. I mean, this is a huge problem for Vancouver Lake that it's gonna take congressional action. It's gonna take the Corps of Engineers. They need to redress it, stabilize the island and open up, um, the flushing channel. I mean, there's some huge cost issues bigger, uh, than the county. I mean, it's bigger than the state. Uh, I'm hoping to meet with Herrera Butler to talk about getting the Corps of Engineers back here because they kind of screwed up their work in the eighties that now has left the lake in the condition it's, it's in right now. Um, and, and counsel, uh, chair, I, 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 I'll try to reach out to the sheriff and, uh, and get some ground truth on, on what their priorities are. I think that's a great idea. Uh, so, uh, I have no expectations of tilting at a windmill that will never see fruition. Uh, but I think the number one priority we should have is to be on a par uh, with the other counties with our taxing structure in Washington State. And it may take years. It will take years. Uh, I don't know that it'll ever succeed. Uh, but it is the fair and equitable thing for us to continue to press on behalf of all of our citizens because whether you look at 15% or 35% decrement every year, uh, wherever our best forecast is that Mark's, uh, Gastroway has provided to us, our general fund is hamstrung and it's, it causes untold pressure on our, uh, county manager every year to come up with a budget and we can't make progress in certain areas because of that loss of money. We are, we are so dissimilar to every other county in the state and the, among the very worst in the entire country. This needs to be fixed. I understand the challenge that there's a delegation that wants us to tax to the absolute every opportunity, our citizens before they'll agree to, uh, support this, but that's not fair. It's not equitable. And if we use all of our taxing options, it still wouldn't fix, uh, the enormity of the problem that we have. So we need to, number one, come up with a bill. Uh, I, Lindsay, I would ask you to come up with a draft that we can start on narrating with all of our legislative delegation, the other border cities and counties. And we just need to, at every opportunity, press this issue. Uh, they're having, uh, open forums on tax reform for the public to join in. That's an opportunity to raise the issue again, to have people call in and, and express their issues, uh, with Clark County uh, being so greatly impacted by tax leakage. I think we just need to continue to hit and beat the drum in every opportunity that we can. And it starts with, uh, this, let's either adopt a, a prior bill that didn't make it out of committee or come up with a new one. But I think we need to have a piece of paper that at least outlines, uh, a potential solution, what we propose and maybe get the other border counties uh, to join in, the other border cities to join in and just keep pressing the issue. I think it's the number one thing we can do among this list of things, and it is certainly a long-term, uh, struggle that we'll face.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Bowman.
I too had wanted to address the sales tax leakage. I loved when I read this document that you sent us that it was listed as number one. That is the place that it definitely needs to be. And even though I know you said at the outset that our expectations, you hope they're realistic. We know what that means, but maybe let's reframe that and let's, let's look at it in terms of the long term that Counselor Medvigi was talking about and start pushing and pressing away so that we achieve that long-term objective. Because what's happening with our general fund is not good over the long term. It's going down, down, down. And the county can't sustain that. We can't tax our citizens to make up for all of that. There's absolutely no way. So in order to have the programs that our citizens deserve, um, and, uh, and the, uh, care from the sheriff's office that our people deserve, we've got to keep that general fund intact and getting it back on track. So I, I too support the idea of getting, um, um, resolutions, bills, whatever at this point you think is going to be the most effective so that we've got data that we can start pushing and communicating to people. I don't think other counties, I know we've said in the past, maybe don't care. I think maybe they don't understand the impact of this sales tax leakage on our county. So let's be sure that we're making that really clear. And thank you for putting it number one. That's exactly where it needs to be.
Okay. Thank you, uh, both Counselor Bowman and Medvigi for pressing that because my idea, Josh, is that I know it'll take a while. But I think we really need to educate and persuade our delegation. And I would differ with Gary in one way, and that is, is that I'm not sure we need to get other border cities and counties involved in, because the more involved other border counties are, the more it will cost the state. And, and I don't know, maybe our delegation isn't enough to be able to convince their friends and neighbors and colleagues there in, in the legislature. But I believe it is something that we should have on our list every single legislative session. We need to have a sponsor that will carry this, uh, each time and just continue to educate our delegation, show them this really, you know, how it does impact us and do some comparisons of other counties, even border counties that are not impacted quite as much as the, as we are in Clark County. The other thing is, is that we realize, uh, since a lot of shopping has been done online with COVID, we really weren't doing as poorly as we thought we would because when you do that, they charge sales tax, you know, because you have your address, if you're gonna have it delivered to your home. So we haven't, but, but that, you know, I, and maybe people are getting used to paying their sales tax. Uh, maybe they have a little bit better, um, you know, concept of that. Well, not so bad, but anyway, so, uh, that would be, uh, what we need though is kind of a, a legislative draft. And I understand that the, you know, legislative council needs to do that at the point that it's introduced as a bill. But we could give, you know, some, some framework for that kind of a bill. So I, I think that's really important for us. Other, um, comments or questions of the council?
So at this point, the next steps would be, um, that we're going to go ahead and kind of tentatively finalize these. And then we are in the process of scheduling our legislative sort of send-off meeting, um, which looks like it'll be at the end of November or possibly the first week of December at this point. So we'll be in touch, um, regarding the exact date for that. Um, but we'll be inviting the whole legislative delegation. We'll walk through all of the Clark County priorities. Um, and at that point, also be able to walk through the WAC priorities as well. So that's what's next on this.
Okay. And would it be possible that we have some nice goodies for our legislative delegation? Cause a lot of times we've, we've had a breakfast after this whole presentation, if, if it's in person. If it isn't, I don't know if we have a big enough, uh, conference room, but if we do have this meeting in person, let's make sure that we have a nice spread for our delegation. So anyway, thank you, uh, Josh and Annika for coming in, Lindsay for putting this together and keeping on top of it. So, um, if there are no other, uh, comments or questions to the council, we will allow Josh and Annika to go back to their, their other job and, and we will proceed with our council time.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. You had us at goodies, but nice to see you all.
All right. Thank you. Okay, um, we're gonna move on then to old business and minutes for the September 29th council time.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and, uh, seconded to, I mean, yes, it's been moved and seconded to the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, rules and procedures. Get that up on the screen.
So we can go ahead and scroll down to the highlighted provisions. Um, everything that's in red is still the, the new stuff, but um, you can see the couple of changes that were made since our last council time discussion. Um, there is the change here regarding the, the Tuesday meetings and the process for counselors to put something on the agenda. Um, so this just clarifies that, that change that we were talking about at the last meeting, um, regarding the distinction for putting something on a Tuesday agenda versus putting something on a council time agenda.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that, Lindsay. It looks great.
Of course. So same, again, same changes there. So we can go ahead and scroll down. Um, the last one here, oop, scrolled up just a little bit. Sorry, I missed one. Um, there on the executive session. So Leslie, jump in if you want to. But in looking at the requirements for a, um, reconvening of the council following an executive session, that the council does need to reconvene, even if there is no action. And so this revised language here in the highlighting reflects that requirement.
Uh, good morning, Chair and counselors. Um, that change was made, um, after I did some research with the RCW and, uh, because the OPMA, um, requires, uh, that the public be notified of when meetings are occurring, when they're ending, that regardless of whether no action is taken in executive session, the, any public meeting is the any public meeting is required to go back into open session two, then adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll be easy. Okay.
Yes, we can scroll down. So this is the language that describes regarding whether an absence is unexcused and the language we talked about with the six or more Tuesday council meetings, council work sessions, or council time meetings within a 12 month period. And that then it would be a violation potentially, the council will decide. But it would would fall under the section six below violations of the Code of Professional Conduct here. And then the council would be empowered to take whatever action under section six, including the censuring, public admonishment, and et cetera. That also gives reference to state law saying that, you know, any action under section six here is separate and apart from any action that may be taken by the county legislative authority against a counselor under state law. And that's that 30 day window that would remove them from compensation.
Okay. Okay. Are any questions on this piece? With this language refined? Madam Chair.
Counselor Bowman.
There was just one thing, and I'm looking for it now. I forgot to look for this earlier. I had felt like maybe there should be some acknowledgement that the counselor is communicated with by either the county manager or the chair when an excused unexcused absence has occurred so that there's no charge later of miscommunication.
There is a provision in here that says that in all of the meeting minutes that it will list a counselor if they're absent, excused, or absent, unexcused. And of course, that's public. So we can require the county manager to communicate that to a counselor, but it would be contained in the minutes.
And that would occur at the at the most two weeks later after the absence. So at least that's something. And thank you for pointing that out.
But you don't think it it should be actually noted in in these rules and procedures? It might be a good idea. Just simply to to really remove all question.
Yeah, I I agree. And then there isn't a charge later of, yeah, I think that was excused.
Can you see a way of adding that in, Lindsay?
Yeah, I think the challenge is, and this is just the attorney brain in me, then it's, well, did the county manager communicate it? And then you've got to go back to email records or something like that, as opposed to having the onus stay upon the counselor to ensure that if you're absent, that it's listed as absent, excused. That it would be kind of your responsibility as the counselor to say, I know that I missed Wednesday's meeting. And then at the next count, you know, the next meeting, when you approve the minutes to say, I, you know, I was absent, and I believe my absence was excused. I'm not sure why it says unexcused. You know, so that leaving the onus on the counselor to make sure that if they are absent, that their absence is excused and that it's noted as excused.
I actually do, I I see that reasoning. It could actually be more problematic to have to have a communication to that. So maybe maybe the are sufficient, and that's what we go back to. That's the documentation that's used. Because we do take, you know, we have role or whatever for for every business, every meeting. For instance, the council time and we don't go here, 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 but we do see. And and our Scribner, the person who's taking the notes, does note who is in attendance. So if that meets with your approval, Counselor Bowman, if that answers your concern.
I
You okay with that?
I I think it's fine. No.
Okay, thank you.
A related comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe I'm the the least organized of all of you, but I seem to schedule almost day to day between my personal schedule and work schedule, and certainly by week to week. And I do my absolute best to make myself available for every meeting. I'm just concerned about the under paragraph five, the 10 days in advance. I mean, I I would like maybe a little bit more flexibility in that so that it could be approved even a day in advance. I mean, if something, it may not be an emergency. It may be just, you know, I I get meetings added to my calendar sometimes daily and sometimes weekly. And then we don't see the conflict. I mean, I had a legislative steering committee meeting this past Friday. And also a conflict. Now, I don't remember, oh, Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. And I think Julie was, I'm hoping, able to cover the legislative steering committee. But I missed that committee. And but we didn't, between Kristen and I, we didn't see the conflict until literally the day before that I was double booked. So I'm just wondering if there could be a different time period stated for than 10 days in advance in order for it to be.
The unexcused in terms of any sort of penalties or potential for a violation only applies to the Tuesday council meetings, the council work sessions, and council time, which those are in your calendars for months in advance because we just block the the hold there. And those are at a regularly scheduled time, with the exception of work sessions sometimes can be at different times, but it's generally within that block of time. So in terms of missing Lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board or some of those other meetings, that wouldn't trigger the potential violation of section six.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. These are these are posted meetings and they're you know, they're they're they are set in advance, and they are the ones that actually are problematic if we do not have a quorum. And that's why, you know, we need some advance notice. I don't know that 10 days is required. And I guess I'd get feedback from the rest of the council on this. Do we really need 10 days? Or could it be five or seven? Or, you know, a week in advance? Or is there any better number of days that would be suggested?
Well, ultimately, to get to the quorum issue, I mean, that's what we're trying to solve, number one, besides the general work ethic issue. You know, how much time in advance could we basically react to finding out that someone's not going to be there in order to get get the quorum back? Or somehow ended, I mean, you don't want to cancel meetings on when they're occurring. So I mean, maybe I'm not sure what the answer is, but the 10 days just scares me a little bit. But maybe we should just keep it 10 days, or or I I would prefer whatever lesser amount we could set it on. You know, seven or five business days or 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 calendar days.
What is the what are the number of days? Is it just 24 hours prior to any kind of a meeting that we have to post? Or what is it, Kathleen?
For, yeah, for scheduling meetings, the council would need 24 hours notice. Obviously, if we're canceling a scheduled meeting, we prefer to do the same notice. But obviously, if something happens, a meeting could still occur. But the council, if there's no quorum, could still get information, but not provide any direction or make any decisions like approving minutes.
The reason for the 10 days, it gives that broadest period of time when staff is putting together, for example, the weekly calendar and all of those things, getting all of the hearing notices. Because, you know, when we do a hearing notice, we pay for the notice and all of that. And so with the weekly calendar going out for 10 days, at least that gives the time to say, okay, we're pulling certain items. We don't, you know, all of the agenda is ready to go for when they try and post those materials online. So there's the the minimum requirements. And then the 10 days gives sort of the the best amount of time that we can have to ensure that staff can make sure everything's prepared without having to double work.
That makes that makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? I I was thinking earlier that it would be good, like say for council time meetings, if the chair knew, say, for instance, today, if we weren't going to have a quorum for next week. But maybe maybe 10 days is better, if that's if that's generally doable for us.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you're going to take a vacation or go out of town or something normally, unless unless it is a family emergency or something, and that is covered. You know, except in the case of unforeseen emergency. And so, you know, we got to, we give leeway to that. But I think generally for it it kind of does sound like a long time, except that that, as Lindsay just explained, I mean, we have to, you have to notice it, you have to put the advertisement for it. It's not only online, correct?
And I'll just to provide some clarity, too, on the notices. The only meeting that requires longer than 24 hours notice is a hearing. And those, the council knows well in advance, that's a 10 days notice. Lindsay is correct. The internal process where staff provides staff reports and stuff for the agenda does go out that 10 days, but that does not necessarily impact when you're having that meeting or conversation. Because again, we just need 24 hours notice, other than a public hearing, to get something in front of the council.
I'm assuming that 10 days includes Saturday and Sunday. So that that would be a part of the 10 days. Is that right?
Usually with any sort of legislative drafting, if it's 10 days or more, it's calendar days. If it's less than that, it's working days. But that's just a rough thing. But this would really be considered for the calendar days.
Shall we say that? Should be provided or must be provided at least 10 calendar days in advance.
So I was just raising the issue. I'm okay with, especially with good discussion and Lindsay's explanation. We could keep it at 10 days and could specify calendar days or not.
Let's do, let's do. Yeah, it specifies like when we put 48 hours in four, eight, and 48, we spell it out and we give the numbers. So, yeah, that's, let's do. Thank you.
I believe that's the last change, but we can scroll down to the end just to confirm. Yes. So I think at this point, you could certainly orally make that change to 10 calendar days. That's not such a substantive change that would need to have any issues there. But so if you wanted to move forward with approving this now, and then we can, with that oral notice of the amendment, we could move forward with that, or you can, you know, pause this and consider it at another point if you prefer.
I think it's just clarification. Let's go. Let's go forward.
Okay, is that a motion, Counselor Bowman?
Oh, yes, it is.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended rules and procedures as presented today. Any further discussion?
Question of clarification, if I might.
Counselor Olson?
So the approval today is to move it toward a Tuesday hearing, as this is an ordinance, it has to be adopted by ordinance? This clarification.
Right. And actually, if I could jump in on that for a moment. What will happen is it will need to be set for a public hearing pursuant to the charter. And what you can do is have it amended at that point, and we can set forth, you know, the language for the amendment, and it will require a minimum of three votes.
And then
Okay.
Leslie, could you talk a little bit about, so are currently our rules of procedures are suspended since COVID has been in effect to give some flexibility to the council to have meetings sooner and what we're addressing. So with, Leslie, could you expand a little bit on what that process would look like with regards to the public hearing and approval?
Certainly. So according to the charter, it's section 8.2. Once the amendment amended ordinance has been voted in, it is not take effect for 10 days after the enactment. And certainly, if the rules procedure are already suspended, those rules of procedure would not be in effect due to COVID.
Can I ask for one
Sure.
clarification? Because I'm not sure I heard you correctly. Did you say it takes a unanimous vote by the council to pass it? Oh, okay.
No.
Okay.
It's it's just the three votes.
Okay, thank you for that. I that's what I suspected. I was assuming I heard it incorrectly.
Okay. Any further discussion? So the motion is to move this forward to a public hearing. And so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to council meetings.
So there's, Counselor, there's two points under this for your consideration today. One is our monthly check in to see if we want to continue doing remote meetings. That was decided a couple of months ago to review this monthly due to COVID and through the the WebEx virtual meetings for all of our council meetings. So I just wanted to obtain that clarity to continue remote meetings, at least through this month, or if you want to do it for a longer period of time. And then the second, I just wanted to let you all know that, starting next week. So we have been providing links to our WebEx meetings so that the community can listen and participate remotely. The one thing that we haven't been doing on our council time meetings is providing them the link to the WebEx. So they're having to call in, and then they would have to go later to re to look at the recorded or the recorded meeting later. So just to increase that transparency for our community, starting next week, we will provide the link to the actual WebEx so that those members of the community can log in through their computer and actually see what's on the screen and the presentations to be a little bit more transparent. So I just wanted to provide that update to you all, and we'll put that, it's much like a council meeting. Again, there's still no public testimony done at these, but it just gives them another real time opportunity to participate with the council during council meetings. So with that said, does the council desire, I would recommend that you highly consider moving forward for the foreseeable future with continuing remote meetings for all council meetings.
What is the council's pleasure?
My my personal opinion is we're still in unsettled times. Our numbers are starting to look a little better. But I think we should continue in this vein. I mean, all the other committees and boards I belong to are still continuing with WebEx format. And most are leaving the hybrid because they just were too problematic technically. So my druthers would be to continue with the month of month to month consideration.
I have no objection to that, but I was going to suggest that maybe now we could do October, November. We're already moving through October, and we don't foresee any change in the COVID situation for November. So maybe this time we could do two months.
And also, just on that note, Counselor Bowman and the rest of the council, you know, we are getting some questions from staff about our December meetings. And usually, the council takes the last couple of weeks off in December. So, you know, it might be appropriate. So, you know, it might be appropriate to look at through December, since you only have, I believe, one meeting in December. Um, that's a council meeting, you probably have a couple of council times. So it might be something that you want to consider just doing through the end of the year. And of course, if something changes and we're out of COVID before December 1st, we can bring that back to the council and we can reconsider it then as well.
I think that's an excellent idea, and thank you for informing this new counselor about that December policy. I did not know that. I think that's very appropriate and, and, uh, let's do, let's, let's take this through to the end of the year then.
And Kathleen, are we, is the budget scheduled for the first week in December as usual?
No. It's in.
Because we did, okay, because we did that, we did that the last two years, I guess, huh?
Yes, so.
Last year anyway, yeah.
Yeah, the, um, it's actually the week before, I believe Thanksgiving, yes. Um, so it's not even the week of Thanksgiving, the week before, it's the week of November 15th is the budget hearing for the 2022 annual budget.
Okay, thank you. Do you need a motion on this? Because I don't hear any other voices talking, so maybe we should go ahead and make a motion and see what other counselors think.
Madam Chair, I'm sure it's maintaining remote to the end of the year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move, move that we do that, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you. We got a second? Okay, thank you, Counselor Lance. Uh, any further discussion?
Yes, would you please repeat the motion, I didn't, I couldn't hear it.
Stay remote to the end of the year.
Oh, okay, good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to new business broadband internet.
So I did ask Lindsay to, um, provide some overview. I know several counselors have been reached out to. I know it's been a, a priority for at least Counselor Mevagee and others, um, to look at broadband opportunities, funding opportunities, partnerships within the community. And we've seen a slew of more information coming in. As you know, you approved the franchise agreement last week with the Port of Ridgefield to expand there. So I, I just asked Lindsay to come in and kind of provide a, an overview for the council on this and see, um, what options there are and what we can do moving forward.
So I wish I had better news, um, in terms of options moving forward and, um, you know, clear pathways. It's, um, unfortunately not really within the, um, the, it's not really directed at the county in terms of actions to take on this issue. So there, first of all, there have been a flurry of emails regarding some grant opportunities with federal money that has come to the state. Um, and the state, uh, the broadband office at the state level for grants that the counties are eligible for, its local governments are eligible for. But really, these are directed for ports and public utility districts. Um, there was legislation that was passed that allows public utility districts to start, um, being a public entity providing direct internet access. There was a pilot program out of Kitsap and the Kitsap PUD that, um, was moving in this direction. And what Kitsap PUD started doing was that PUD was laying the, the, the material, the fiber optics. Um, and then the private internet service providers were then coming in and utilizing the, um, you know, infrastructure that was then in place. But there were provisions within state law that prohibited the PUD from becoming a direct internet service provider. And those were recently eliminated. And so as part of that, um, that legislative change, there was a grant that was tied into it using the federal money to expedite, um, public utility districts to do that. And there are a handful of PUDs that currently provide, um, telecommunications support. They are all, um, within rural counties, so the Olympic Peninsula, Plougham, Jefferson, Grace Harbor, Mason, um, Pacific, Lewis, and then the central part of the state, um, Okanagan, Shalane, Grant, Benton, um, Skagit County and Ponduree County and a couple of others also do that. Of course, we have Clark Public Utilities here, they do not provide telecommunications services. Um, King, Pierce, Snohomish, they don't have a PUD that provides telecommunications services. So is it possible that Clark PUD could go into that? They, they certainly are legally authorized to do that, um, but they're a completely separate entity from us. Um, but it, it, you know, there, there would be money available to them if that was of interest for them and moving forward with that. And I will also note that in terms of any of the state funding that's coming through, first of all, there's a match requirement, um, that has to be met. Secondly, there has to be an agreement with an internet service provider that if the infrastructure is in place, that internet service provider will provide service using the infrastructure. So there has to be a contract in place at the time of the grant application. Um, so it's not just a matter of the government providing the infrastructure, there has to be an agreement with an internet service provider as well. Um, on that note, um, what some other counties have done, um, Pierce County being the primary leader in this, Pierce County is proposing, and they of course haven't passed their 2022 budget yet. Um, but the Pierce County Executive is proposing $4 million, um, in support for rural broadband. Um, but that is money that is going to be provided in conjunction with their private internet service providers. So it'll be a private public partnership, um, funds that will provide the infrastructure and then the internet service provider to some of their more rural areas. So there are options that counties have taken, um, to work with their PUDs, to work with their ports. Kathleen mentioned, um, obviously the county working with the Port of Ridgefield. And that's a requirement when the ports or the PUDs are pursuing these grants, they have to work with the county. Um, and the county has to provide support for that grant application. So that's certainly something that we can do, um, if we're approached by, you know, the other ports. I spoke to the Port of Vancouver, they're within the urban area, so right now they don't have any challenges, um, readily identifiable in terms of a need for broadband access because they have it. Um, but, you know, Port of Ridgefield certainly in moving forward with that. So that's kind of the state on the ground right now. I know this is going to continue to be a topic of conversation, certainly at the state level with the state broadband office and what they can do. Um, and, you know, whether or not they move into treating this more like a government utility, um, and allowing other jurisdictions to be an internet service provider. Um, but that's, I think, a bigger conversation for down the road, um, and would probably be a partnership with the PUD.
So Counselor, too, I can reach out, um, to the Clark PUD general manager, the CEO over there. You know, we've, we created a great relationship during COVID when we were working together with funding and just see, um, what her vision is with regards to this and opportunities to see if there's any way that we can assist with the funding and getting that business alignment made up for the rural areas. So I'll, I'll make a commitment to reach out to her as well.
May I comment? So Kathleen, I, I was going to raise that, I was going to ask you to do just that. But additionally, send a letter to each of the service providers that exist in the county right now, kind of outlining, outlining the opportunities. Uh, when Ridgefield came up on, on board, you know, I immediately called David Rip at Camas Washoo and said, well, is this something you want to do too? And, and for the reasons Lindsay just stated, uh, they, they weren't interested at the time. I mean, we, we, we're not going to be a utility, and we have to rely on our existing utilities, uh, and our private providers out there, right? You know, I'm a firm believer in the marketplace, but, you know, the great national debate over the last decade or so of whether internet should be a utility or not. Uh, but we've kind of moved into a new realm here with, uh, remote working and then our schools, uh, during the pandemic, pandemic. And especially in my district, uh, the, the opportunity for remote learning was really challenging. The opportunity for remote working continues to be a challenge, even in some of the urban areas. And the reality too is, you know, if you put in infrastructure and fiber optic or whatever cable-based high, high-speed internet, it attracts businesses. You know, that's one of the reasons why Richmond, uh, the port is doing it. Uh, Tennessee, uh, I think it's Chattanooga was a, a showcase example of where, uh, the city invested in high-speed internet. And then they became a booming, uh, lightning rod for businesses to come there that rely so heavily on it. We have a railroad, uh, industrial area, uh, we have the ports, potential airport. You know, we, we have a need out in the community for high-speed internet. So, and there's funding, uh, coming from different sources. We may have an infrastructure bill that may weigh in on that as well. Uh, so we have all these opportunities and we really, uh, need to get our providers to step up. I, and I will tell you, I tried calling Comcast, uh, and I'm pretty good about researching and finding telephone numbers. I couldn't find a single telephone number. I actually talked with one representative that put me in touch with their business office and, but I've never, they've never returned any of my calls. So I would ask the county manager to send a letter out, not only a call, um, our utility, but send a letter out to our private utilities out there and saying, are you interested in stepping up? Perhaps we can partner, uh, to increase the coverage that we've got. And I get complaints even from Camas and Battleground. You know, it's not just out in, in the remote rural areas, it's, there are some dead spots throughout the county.
Okay, other comments or? Well, I don't know what to say, I guess, uh, continue to, uh, pursue this, maybe have the county manager to reach out.
Yes, we can certainly do that. So, yeah, Lindsay, if you can help me draft a letter for the internet providers and I'll call, um, the PUD and just kind of find out, you know, what the opportunities are and how we can, um, help them move forward. It's one of those areas, it's not necessarily our area of jurisdiction, but we can certainly provide, you know, some assistance if needed. Um, and then we'll report back to the council. Um, I just, again, I wanted, that was important for all of you to hear this conversation as well as the community because we are getting, um, calls and emails from local businesses, from residents that it just doesn't, and it's with their relationships too with the providers, um, and not being able to, not knowing what to do. So, so it's just a communication, I think, piece for us as well, for the community.
No, thank you Kathleen for putting it on for, and the discussion, and hopefully your letters will generate some interest and maybe your personal conversations as well.
Okay, moving on to counselor reports. I would say, uh, my little report is, is I meet on, Kathleen and I meet on a monthly basis with, uh, Identity Park County. And, um, I think I wrote some things down, but it's always a pleasure to meet with, with, uh, Identity Park County. They are very supportive of many of the things that we want to do and they, they want to help. They did, uh, have, let's see, a, they, a lot of our time was spent talking about, about COVID and businesses, et cetera. And then we went on to, um, they asked about the November ballot and they did take some, some, you know, polling with their businesses. And they polled on the 1/10th of 1% November ballot and, uh, this wasn't private, was it Kathleen? I can tell them this, okay.
Uh, yeah, I don't believe so, I believe you actually asked if you could share information, and he said yes.
So, uh, 56% of their, um, membership support that 1/10th of 1%. Eighty, 38 do not support it and 8% didn't know. So they already have a 56% support for that. And, um, let's see. And on their agenda, very high on their agenda is this homelessness issue. And our addressing that in any way that we can, and, uh, we did speak a little bit about, you know, coordinating, et cetera, with the city of Vancouver as well as, you know, our, our different, uh, with the county and the city. And I know that we're attempting to do that, uh, mightily. But, uh, and then the other thing, the other thing that was mentioned is these, um, laws that were passed, the legislation that was passed this past year, uh, which was supposed to be a police reform, uh, really has tied law enforcement's hands greatly, but it's not just law enforcement, it really affects the community. I'll just give you an anecdotal story that, that I heard of, of somebody that I know whose mother lives in an apartment in the area and, uh, the, the son, the adult son, of course, I mean, she's older, she's 87. Uh, and he was calling and didn't get an answer. And so, um, they had been away, he had been away with his family for a few days. But he did call and called during that time and, and fine, but when they got back, he called, no answer. Then, uh, the, he thought, well, she's out or whatever, and he continued to call. At any rate, what happened was is he had to call the, the apartment management company. And they of course cannot go in to that apartment, they can only knock on the door. And if they don't get an answer, they don't do anything. So he asked, is, is my mother's car there? And yes, it was. So he called the police and discovered that the police cannot make a well, welfare check unless a family member is standing right there with them. They cannot go in and check on this, and that's one of the legislative changes. His mother had been on the floor for some time, he finally did get there. She went to the hospital and died about eight hours later. And he, by the way, could not go and see her in the hospital either because of COVID, even though she was dying. So that's kind of mad thing too. But the, the point is, is if he, he asked the, the sheriff's deputy, if I had, if I lived in Ohio and I wanted to, and nobody, no other family member was there and I called and I, you know, you couldn't make this well check, and the answer was no. So that's one very small little thing that seems to me to be quite harmless that has been changed in legislation to supposedly reform the police. And, um, so at any rate, the business owners in, in Clark County that belong to ICC are very much, uh, affected by these changes in legislation for this so-called police reform. So, um, I just wanted to report that, our meeting with ICC. Other counselor reports?
Madam Chair, thank you for sharing that very telling story. Um, I had just two quick comments. Uh, one is in, uh, working with Workforce Development Southwest Washington. Uh, they're in the process, as I think I reported a few months back, of searching for a new CEO because the excellent one that they had is moving out of state. Um, and this is the month for the finalization of those interviews, um, where there will be some meet and greet opportunities and semifinalists selected, just as an FYI. Second, um, announcement, uh, Counselor Olson and I jointly serve on the, um, Kallit's Tribal Foundation Clark County Fund. That fund, just so that the 501(c)(3) s in the area are well aware, is up and running again and, um, accepting applications with the application process available online now.
Great, that's good to know, the back. Meeting and, and accepting grant applications, other, other reports?
But, Madam Chair, if I may, I know there are three of us there at the RTC, but I think it's worth mentioning to the, for public digestion, they, they should tune into the RTC, uh, presentation yesterday by, uh, ODOT on the work they're doing. on the work they're doing on congestion pricing, tolling. There were several really very passionate presentations made. Ty Stober was one, Paul Harris weighed in on really characterizing how Southwest Washington was going to face the brunt of this, and it was really punishment for our local community if what they're proposing takes effect. So anyway, it was a very interesting, some impassioned comments, and I would draw everyone's attention to it. And the chair as well, I didn't mean to neglect your comments.
I don't feel neglected. Thank you. Other comments or other counselor reports? Okay, moving on to work session requests.
There is one work session request this morning, and it's from Community Planning and Public Works. It's for one hour in November for the council to review the 2022 Community Planning and Public Works Transportation Work Program and make any adjustments. So they are, at the end of the work session, they're seeking to answer questions of the council and seek approval of their 2022 work program.
With that objection, we will have that work session. Anything else, Lindsay? We had our, kind of our, well, this may be different, though. Do you have anything for us, Lindsay?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go into executive session for two pending litigation, RCW 3110-1I for 35 minutes. One potential litigation in accordance with RCW 423110-1I for 10 minutes, and one collective bargaining session for 10 minutes. That's a total of 55 minutes. We will have an attorney, our attorney in attendance with us. Will there be any action? Leslie?
No, there won't be any action afterwards.
No action afterwards. So we will leave this meeting and go into our executive session and then come back and adjourn this meeting once our executive session is over. See you on the other side. Very much. Bye.